So.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for your insight, I appreciate it. Rite of your ally, if there's no more, then do roll call.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Fatto?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
Yes. So. Alright, twenty-two ninety-eight. There it is. Alright, uh, Resolution twenty-two ninety-eight, motion by. Being resolved that the town board of the town of Scottsdale falls after as the hiring of Taylor, uh, Ryan and attorney, Williams Ryan Junior would be actually the attorney that we're gonna use, um, for the proposed Marshall Water District project. His hourly rate is two hundred and forty-five dollars per hour. This is part of, again, completing all of the necessary paperwork to conform with the grants.
Okay.
We're just about out of time. If we don't get this stuff in now, there's no way that we'd be able to even put it out to bid to find out feasibility of the project. So. Again, this is, um, to allow him to work on the project. I don't know if that makes sense to everybody, but I don't know how else to tell you. But you're obligated to have an attorney for the project. It's just part of the whole grand scheme thing. So he has been willing, after I asked him, we've used him multiple times in the past for the town. He's very familiar with our water, and he's very familiar with this town in particular. So, I think he would be the best one for it, and that's who I reached out to. So, I don't know if there's any other discussion?
Motion.
Motion by Aston Newton? Al second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm kind of thinking. This, this one is bond counsel. This one.
Well, this is not a bond counsel.
I think within Clinton Essex or Franklin County, we'd get an attorney up here. Because last time around on this, on this situation, we had to pay him to come from Albany, New York, up here. And these guys charge from the time they leave, the time they get back. So, basically, I'm opposed to it. That's all, it's, I've met him, I mean, he's been here, but the night that he came here, I didn't really think he had to be here, but I was outvoted on that. So, think about it, leave Albany, come up here for ten minutes, do your work, go back, good deal. But, further, another thing I'm opposed to this on. This guy is, he's same attorney, and it was brought before the board. He is affiliated with Leverage Engineering. They do joint things together all the time. And that's another reason why I'm not gonna go for this situation. Thank you.
So.
I know I'll get blamed for it.
Now I have some discussion. Um, again, he is very familiar with our water district. He's very familiar with everything we've done in the town so far. Therefore, he would have to spend the least amount of time to catch up and understand the water district that he is working on, because he's very familiar with. Uh, secondly, um, he has, he is not the bond counsel. The bond counsel that we used was Douglas Goodfriend.
Where is he at? Where is he located?
He's located out in New York City. Alright, the, um, there's, there's not a heck of a lot of really, to say that, I can't say the guy, the bond counsel, but there, there, there's certain ones that are highly recommended. I mean, he's highly recommended. The instance where you talked about Mr. Ryan coming up here was for the extension of the Marshall Water District, which we were trying to clean up and take care of, after the water line was put up the Buckwheat Estates. I mean, the curb before the horse thing. He was asked to show up down here by the majority of this board. He did not come up there just to, to spend that money. He was needed, we felt, to answer the questions and to answer the questions of any of the residents that may show up that night to, um, give his perspective of the project. And, and again, that was just the extension of the Marshall Water District, which we had already put up there. But, uh, that's all I can say about that. We're aware it is, and, uh, like I said, this is mandated by both the CDBG and the USBA ARD and the bond. So if we don't have it, by the end of Jan, we're, we're done, we're not gonna have to worry about it anyways. Just so everybody's well aware of what happens with this project without, oh, well, yeah, okay? And we're out of time.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Fatto?
No.
Mr. Randall?
Okay, I'm voting yes. If you do not approve. Before we won't have to worry about the water project anymore. Alright, that's it.
So, point of clarification, then that would nullify the twenty-two ninety-seven also, correct?
Yeah, there's no sense of spending the money on that other one, because we had to have these things set up by the end of Jan, right? And it's not gonna happen. I don't know how it goes back on that.
Well, you could just resend that resolution, but I don't know why you would. You're gonna have another meeting in December and January.
Do it then, sorry, no big deal.
I don't.
You could still put the resolution back on the table.
Yeah, but in December, I don't think there will be enough time to have it come to you.
So you're gonna resend the?
I can check with the true powers that be on the CEBG and the USBA ARD, but, they were pretty adamant if we didn't move forward with it, because it's been a whole year now, that they would take back the one point two million from USBA ARD and the two point five million from CDBG. If you want, I can make them look at it, but.
You're the Bush House Board.
This is out of my.
More motion?
I, I can check with them, but I'm just telling the real story, I don't, I don't think anymore. You wanna wait?
Yeah, we'll wait until we get clarification. That's my view.
Alright, that's the end of Resolution claims. They're off on thirteen thousand eight hundred sixty-six dollars and two cents. Highway nineteen thousand seventy-three dollars and sixty-two cents. Woods Mill Water, two thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-one cents. Marshallville Water, nine thousand ninety-two dollars and ninety-one cents. Macy Lane Water, thirty-seven thousand twenty-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents. Lake District, one thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars and three cents. The only claims are two zero two two zero one three eight eight through two zero two two zero one four five five. And two zero two two zero one four seven five. Parole claims, two zero two two zero one three six eight through two zero two two zero one three eight seven. So, can I get a motion to pay the claim?
Motion.
Mr. Fatto?
Second.
Mr. Newton, roll call.
Question, uh, question please.
Go ahead.
Macy Lane being that high, what is it?
It's in your packet, I don't really know, I don't know.
Bond.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that's right, that's what the, it was changed. And that's why your invoices are out of order, because it came back. And we'd be really late if we didn't pay that, so she had to change all the abstracts.
Yeah, that's why we're late paying the bills. Alright, um, did I answer anyone?
Did I answer?
Alright.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Fatto?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
Yes.
Alright, that brings us to public forum. Jeff?
Your attorney that you were talking about just now for the water, I have another one that you can call that's closer. That is, that deals with the same kind of thing. I can give you his name and stuff.
Yeah, I'll give it to me after. It's just, the problem is that setting up accounts and everything else, I do really don't get this.
Oh, he's closer, he's out of the Lake George area, and he is also.
Ryan is out of the Glen Falls area.
Yeah, but he, he deals with it as the same, I'm not sure what he could charge or anything, but I just, I have another name of another firm that I could.
We can look into it, but I don't think we're gonna have time before first of January to get everything set up.
Yeah, but I'm more willing to take your information if you wanna give it to me after.
Yeah, I will.
Or just mail it, that way I got it in writing, so.
Yeah, I can do that too. Um, I have a couple other things I just wanted to bring up. Um, the highway supers here. Um, last year I brought up the consideration of putting up, putting up a gate at the pit entrance. Uh, this fall, I've seen several vehicles go in and out of there in the evening on a Saturday or Sunday, and they weren't going in there for sand or salt, they were going in there possibly hunting or dumping remains of animals. Um, I'm, I don't know who they are, I just, I see them going in and out. So, that's just one other thing.
Was one of the town trucks, like, a pickup truck?
No, this is private people.
Hauling leaves in and out of there after he's picking up the cart back.
That kind of a thing, well, I'm not sure exactly, but if you're going in there at dawn, late in the evening, you're not going in there to drop brush off with all the hunting and everything.
No, I just wondered, that's all.
Um, the other thing is, this winter, I know last year I saw private sander go in there, private contractors, not sure where they're coming from, but they loaded up their, their sander on the back of their truck. You know, they come out twenty minutes later, and then they're going and making money out of it. So that was my concern of last year.
Is that not allowed? Because Peru does allow that.
And the thing is, the road, the town only has an easement to use it. So in other words, anyone in the town shouldn't be going down there unless they have, unless they have permission from the landowner.
So it's not using the sand, it's to drive it on the road, it's a shit, okay?
And it's also taking sand out of there to use it privately as your own benefit.
Right, that's allowed in a lot of towns. That is allowed in a lot of towns.
Um, we had this going, putting sand up at the highway garage for the public to go and get. So I would like to see some sand put up at the highway garage.
I used to do that, I don't know if Mike's got a spot up there right now, or if he can go up.
No, I don't, I don't really like that idea, because then we'd, we've already had to replace a couple wells in the area.
Oh, from putting just a small pile, what if you put it on the corner of the pavement up there? You could put it on the field side.
Well, I, um, I.
Eventually, the town will have to have a shed over the salt pile.
I agree with you.
In that role, I mean, we have to do something about it.
Fantastic.
It's only been off for twenty-one years.
I, even if we had just a small, if we put a tarp or something over it for the public, especially with the icing and the elderly people, it would be only fair for all the public to have that right to use the sand.
One problem with leaving a pile out, done, done maintenance, if you leave it out in the open, when you get melt and what, it freezes, so then you're up there with a shovel, and you can't dig it anyway.
I know.
I, I would, I would love to, but, you know, it'd be just a wicked, I hate to say the word nuisance, but it would really be a nuisance.
And possibly live out there.
Well, and the other thing, you've got people going down there and loading sand up and profiting off it, and I don't think that's right to the taxpayers.
I don't know anything about that.
I mean, I can take pictures of it, but I saw it last year, and I know the background.
Your, your gate sounds like a terrific idea, is there somebody on the board willing to?
Not, I'm talking like a bar gate that sits up high that swings. You know, that sits above the snow.
Right. I mean, is there anybody on the board that's willing to entertain the idea of putting up a gate at all?
It's gonna be a use of our money. It'd be a great use for our money, absolutely.
It was highly discouraged by the.
Sure.
Sure.
Yeah.
It was highly discouraged by the highway department when I discussed that with them, because they have to get out open a thing.
So you don't like the idea of it?
Well, well, we can, we can, I mean, we can be reasonable when we talk about a gate, and we can be reasonable.
Garage doors on remote at the garage, there's a way to help.
That have to be solar.
Okay.
Yeah, I can see where it's thinking, you have to get out of your truck and open it.
You know?
Not that I'm saying we're there anytime in the morning, anytime.
They make the solar one, the, the solar that would make the post a button. But mainly, it would be on the weekends, or when there are any.
But, but we always.
Reasonably speaking.
Alright, so, just one at a time, please, and, one at a time, and, um, just generally speaking, okay? I believe it's been our town, um, policy that we've never discouraged any of the residents to go up there, you know, with ice on, icing in the driveway, and in the focus of health and safety issues, to go up and get a bucket of sand to, with, with salt in it, to sand their driveway. Like I said on the record last year, I even, my driveways are like this, I even will go up there with a couple buckets.
Yeah, but you can go down the road, anyone who, who works for the town or is a town employee could use the road.
Right, but what I'm saying is.
That's not fair to the rest, they can't.
No, we never told anybody they could not go down there.
I understand that, but that's, this is why, when I brought the right of way, I, I was very specific that it was for, not just for the town employees, that it would be for the public, for the community, to use the road.
Well, actually, you told me we should go out to the utility right away.
And utility would have been great.
And I tried that, and it was not gonna happen.
Ownership would have been, ownership would have resolved all the problems.
I can't make this guy sell land, and I can't tell him what kind of an easement are we, that we can do either. I mean, it's gotta be an agreement.
If it was the same thing that it was before, the easement was probably just rewritten with a new description of where the lines were.
So do you want all the town residents to be able to go in there, or do you want a gate? Cause now I'm kinda confused.
Well, I would like a gate put up, because it's not fair that people go in there and take advantage of it while others can't.
Those obeying the law aren't allowed to cross that, the people that don't.
Right, no, I understand that, but at first we were talking about application of allowing everybody to be in there, and not just the town employees. Then we're talking about a gate.
That's what we had tried to get, but it didn't work like that.
Okay.
But to my knowledge, the, the landlord never complained about who would have been on that, that driveway. As long as they were going down there for a specific reason of getting sand or salt, and insult, next to take care of it. If you were down there hunting on his land, then I'm sure he would have an issue with that.
Or the town land.
Without permission, then, uh, I'm sure that that could be a contempt. But, like I said, I don't, I don't see any other way around it, I, I'm, I'm very apprehensive, as Mike has stated out, that if we were to put salt and sand up on even the tarmac there, and get washed into somebody nearby property or bordering property, and especially if contaminated their wells, it is a big liability for the town to take. So the only way that we could do that is if we had a container.
What if we get a couple tubs or things, and place them inside the highway garage, and then when the highway garage is open, you can go up inside and take a small bucket?
Yeah, but the highways garage is not always open like on a Saturday or Friday or Sunday.
But you could go the hours of operation.
So.
You're not there usually, you're not there at the highway garage in hours of operation.
And they're probably out and about, so that wouldn't work either.
No, that's what I'm saying, I mean, what has been doing, again, people have to have the responsibility for their own actions. And if they're going in there to, and I don't think it says anything on any signage, um, but, you know, about businesses going in there. But, uh, I, I agree with you there, that, again, it should, you should be profiting from what the taxpayers are paying for.
For your own home and your own necessities.
It has to come some kind of, you know, responsibility from the people going in and out of there to do the right thing. And I don't think it's been a, I don't think you've ever washed a ton of sand like, I could see if a dump truck was going in there taking some.
It used to be, you know, prior years, we, we caught on to it, cause we were told that these dump trucks were going in there to actually bring in their own key to the loader. We found out.
That we could probably.
Oh, yeah.
That we could probably prosecute if you find that bull.
But you got a good point, I mean, when we are at the garage, if people happen to come in, and they want a bucket, we, we've got plenty right on the truck, we go out and we fill their bucket up for them.
Perfect.
Cause I don't, I don't ever wanna refuse anybody, you know?
I'm just thinking about the older people, you know, and with the prices of everything right now, it would be helpful to the community.
If, you know, I'm willing, uh, get their names and their address, and I'll bring them a five gallon bucket.
Okay.
I mean, I'm, I'm out, I'm out and I'm up. You know, I'll do my best I can, you know? It don't matter to me where I go in the town.
Mike, I can't, I don't believe that we're allowed to utilize town equipment to bring it to private residents. I think that may be a contention if we started that practice.
Yeah, I, I know, it'd be massive.
The material is one thing, the transportation.
I think the best thing, the best thing you said is, if somebody needs it, to come to the shop and get the sand.
We're not talking.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll provide them as quick as I can. So, I think that for now, the, the best thing that we could do is try to keep an eye on it, let me know, and the board know.
Make the landowner aware, make the landowner aware through your, your status. That, well, not necessarily, Kevin has the ability to reach out to the landowner and say, I've had a concerned citizen, reach out to me, and then put the onus on the landowner. Make them aware of the possible theft, make it their priority to make it a priority. At that point, if the landowner is not seeing a trouble with it, right, it's his land, their land, excuse me, whomever, right?
I've never heard of any trouble.
Right, but you see, I'm not saying pass the buck. What I'm saying is, if you make the landowner aware of something, then at that point, they ultimately have authority.
They're the decider.
They decide, rather than the town dictating to a private landowner, okay? Which isn't gonna play well, but they're allowed to know that a concerned citizen came here today and spent two plus hours of their time to bring this concern. That's all you gotta do. It's just communication, guys, it's really simple, all this is, is communication. She waited over two hours to communicate, now we have a responsibility to communicate that concern to somebody else. That's all this is, is communication.
And, and again, like I said, I never have received a complaint in front of the landlord that somebody other than a town employee has backed out. I, I didn't make him aware that we would like to continue.
But I'm just, it, it's in general, that's all.
Okay, what about if we went out and got a couple cameras? They have them for hunting, that you can set up every time somebody goes through, it'll take a picture, even if it's a town truck, let it go through. Then if, if we find, okay, ABC's truck goes through, loads up with sand, goes out and starts making a profit off of it, you've got a picture of it. We don't have that right now.
That's a good idea, Howard.
I mean, we got a corner parked a lot right over there, could bring down five, six tandem loads of salt and sand.
Or you could do that too.
It's gonna be an awful, it's gonna be an awful, awful mess.
But still.
You'll have a messier anyways in this spring.
We're being told the people are going up.
Be really busy.
I'm just concerned about people going in there, the thing that really bothers me is that last year I saw a guy with one of those private sanders on the back, he went in, came out twenty minutes later, went out did his business, and then he went back in there and got more.
He went in the town, he was going, he didn't go in the first bit to the left?
No.
Sure, Mike, maybe that would work, we already have cameras here, at this place, so, maybe, maybe that would be workable, do you think so?
It would have to be when it runs off batteries though, or solar.
Well, that's the trail, the trail cameras, if you got two.
It would have to be that, cause there's no power.
But there's cameras here at this facility outside.
Right, but they run off power, correct? Yeah.
Yeah.
So if you set, got two, and you set one up for a side view as people are going through the gates, and if there's any writing on the vehicle, you can see it, and if you set another one up where you can take the front picture, then you got a copy of the license plate.
Well, who owns the property where you're putting these cameras up though? Cause you have a duty to use the road, oh, the town owns the pit. You only have, the town owns the pit or the road where you're putting the cameras.
No, the town owns the pit, they don't own the road.
So you can't really put cameras up without the landowner, right?
Yeah.
Which is on our property.
Yeah, you can put it on town land.
Oh, it's town.
Yeah, it has to go through there, through town land.
If they go through the town entrance area.
I thought you meant putting the camera there.
It's right there.
There'd be a picture of it.
That's a good idea.
I think it's a great idea. You probably would have to have something that says that this property is monitored by a surveillance camera or something.
Absolutely, they make them on metal, you just put a post in the ground, and you put it up, right there where it goes through.
You still only gotta need one camera, cause it'll take a picture in motion activated, so it's gonna take a picture in the way in, and as they exit, it will again take a picture. Somebody's gonna have to be required to make sure that it's anything.
They're gonna have to go in every two weeks.
It would also benefit if there's any kind of vandalism in the pit, you know, cause you never know.
I know, but.
That corner over there would be the ideal spot.
That would be a great thing, to bring some.
And then it's being watched, day and night, right, by residents.
I know, a better location.
It is a better location.
Exactly, you're gonna have.
That road is full of so much garbage from all the people throwing stuff over the bank, it's unbelievable.
If we put salted sand within a certain amount of water weight, DEC is gonna be on top of us about it.
Well, they'll be monitored, and the first things they get, they will.
Yeah, once they see that.
I, I don't want it next to the, the creek either out here. And we, he has too much invested to contaminate the property.
So I guess your idea makes more sense, then? There you go.
If we're gonna spend money on a camera, that's what we think we're losing at least.
I mean, the camera's an asset, you can use it there, and you can use it someplace else if you had to later on, so it's not a throwaway, it's not a throwaway of money.
If we find we need a gate, we'll put a gate up, if we don't need a gate, just leave it in there and let it keep monitoring, keep checking it.
I got a trail cam down, I'll, I got a trail cam down.
And I have the other thing with the, the survey on Turner Park.
You only get three minutes, I'm just teasing.
Stop it.
Can we rotate and come back upstairs?
These guys keep interrupting me, and we were talking about it. Anyway, the Turner Park, this survey that you had done up there.
Yep.
Um, I drove by and I, as I had requested that you had laugh and flags put at all the property corners, so it was visible. Um, I drove by and I noticed on the south end or the Peru end, it looks like there's an encroachment. Um, since you did pay for the survey, well, the taxpayers, we all paid for it, I'd like you to use it as the town's advantage. If this person clearly, it looked like to me, had an encroachment with the garage, I think there should be a boundary line adjustment done to fit in the garage, and make a deal with this person, if they wanna do that, then they should, then you could get money for the survey and to pay for the recording, and I'll be more than willing to come down and help with a description for the adjustment.
Right, and we had discussed that right after.
I would be more than willing to help, I'm, I'm serious on this, an attorney can take it, and it can be done with. But, the longer that it sits there, and nobody does anything, or you just have the guy remove his stuff, because if you allow him to keep their stuff there, next thing you know, there could be a septic over the line, or a leach over the line.
We, we've discussed this, and actually, there's a little bit more to it than that.
Oh, I'm sure there is.
I can't just gift a portion of town land.
It wouldn't be gifting, you would be selling it.
It, it, it would be, because it has to be, my understanding of it is it has to be offered in the paper. It, it, it would be because it has to be, my understanding of it is it has to be offered in the paper to all that, whatever you're going to sell. Has to be offered to all the town.
But it wouldn't be selling. You're an adjustment. If you're making a boundary line adjustment, it's not necessarily a sale.
How would anybody else be able to buy it? Wouldn't it be landlocked in between the town and this other guy?
No.
No.
I think we've got to dean it surplus property first.
But the other problem is that the deed itself.
No, it wouldn't have to be that. It sort of would be surplus.
No, because Turner, going back a long time ago, Turner Park.
Claude Turner.
Was given to the town.
He was an abstractor in Elizabeth Town.
With the intention that the town would not get rid of, of any part of it.
Correct.
So that's the problem we have right now is we cannot move that boundary line.
We wouldn't be moving it. It's an adjustment. Boundary line adjustment. There's a different term legally for this.
If you can bring in the determination.
I've done, I've done it a few times with towns.
If you can bring us into the determination that you're talking about, about an adjustment compared to a moving of. I don't really see the difference, but if you can show us something in writing that says you can do an adjustment without making boundary different and you still own the property, that would be something to look at right now.
If we're gonna do that, like I said, we had looked at and I had discussed both sides of it. The adjustment, if that's what it would be called, to where the daycare center is up there also, which that property is only useful to.
To the daycare.
The daycare.
Right, but there's not a permanent structure that is an encroachment.
Right.
It's just toys and a fence. That's all movable. Mowing is not an encroachment. You can mow on someone else's property. That's fine. I'm talking about a structure, like a garage.
So who built this garage? Did they get a building permit to put it up or what?
It's been there.
Is that a mystery?
Been there for a while because they probably, they didn't know where it was and they got a, they could have came in through the zoning board or the planning board. They got it approved unless you had a real survey, you wouldn't know.
Yeah, there's no, no permit for it. And I'm not discussing, and that's what we're trying to do, was simply move it. But I ran into brick walls and God's honest with you, I'm working on a million other things that.
I know. It's just it was freshly done and I, and I feel the town should keep the ball rolling to resolve the problem. That's all.
It needs to be taken care of, but it wasn't.
I understand. It's not a top priority.
I have to get that.
I understand that.
And I haven't forgot about it. And like I said, that was where I ran, the biggest thing I ran into the, the, the brick wall disreuterate was the restrictedness of the deed. And that I was advised that you just can't gift to one particular person, that it would have to be put out to the residents of the town.
Because it was given to the town, correct? The property by Claude? Okay.
By Hazel.
By Hazel?
Yeah, Mrs. Hazel. Somebody else's, another Turner.
I'd like to sell to you and all.
Yeah, I mean, the Turner's family is huge and so Claude has been down there.
Yes, it is.
But we, we still have, I mean, we're, we're still working on what we're gonna do with property, maybe with, you know, private partnership with the municipality that has town. Or something down there.
Absolutely.
That fits within the guidelines. Like I said, we, I think we discussed that several different meetings as far as doing a elderly home down there. So we'll see how things go. But I, I'm with you. This is exactly what I looked at.
As a resident, can I, will me sit out there first? I would say that this is a legal issue that should be discussed with an attorney, any kind of encroachment. And get a advice from an attorney to, to see what they could do, whether it be what you said or what you said. They, they should be handling that, not, not the town board.
Thank you.
I'm just bringing it into consideration.
The town board does have to make the decision to do that, to move forward with it.
With the advice of a professional attorney who's on staff and gets paid beyond that.
But we also need the great information prior to so we can make our informed decision on which way to go.
Do you have three minutes here?
Stop it. The last thing I want to say is I'm extremely disappointed in the website and I think it creates too much frustration. And there's too much negativity going on. It shouldn't be like that. That's all I have to say.
Well, that was my topic too. Like, I'm astounded and almost speechless about it. Like, you have to have a fire department to take care of emergency situations. You have to have good roads, good roads serve you every day. A website is literally an everyday information highway, or it's supposed to be. It's the portal to transparency in government. Not having a website is the exact opposite of having transparency in government. It's affecting hiring. You should have hirings posted on there. It's affecting school closings. I'm, got my three minutes. It affects school closings. It affects the entire community. In an ideal world, we should have a, a website that has like forums where we could discuss things. I didn't know there was free sand up for grabs and things like that. There's all kinds of information that's not getting out there and a website is now the main form of communication, not newspapers. It's astounding to me that there are not at least two people in charge of the website. Because what, what if you had one person that had a key to the fire department? It makes no sense. If that person is unavailable, somebody else has to have some sort of oversight and access. And if there's nobody in the office or the board that can look at the person, how do we know that the person's competent? How do, we know the person isn't competent, in my opinion. How do we know that they're not even like corrupt? At one point, I hit one of those hyperlinks and I'm pretty sure it took me to a Spanish site that was selling like cars or insurance or something. That's a money generating thing. Is anybody checking on any of those things? Has anybody reviewed his credentials, any of those things? Has anybody exercised any of the options that have been proposed? Like, I don't have an assistant, but if I had an assistant, I would have them checking out four or five town websites near us. Finding two or three that they like, calling up that town and saying, hey, who does your website? So we can call them up and hire them. Because if a town has a website that's functional for years and years and years, go with that vendor. Our only excuse would be there is no money. And I don't think in this town, you can say there's no money. It should be the priority to get this website up three months ago. It's the priority two years ago, I think. But it should be the priority that last month, we should have had it up. The month before, we should have had it up, not the end of the year, not next year. How long does it go on and on and on and on and on? Like, why can't we put a deadline on hiring? I think there was that company that came in. A company would be great because then you'd have access all the time. If one person wasn't available, the next person could. Like, how do you put a cost on that? Like, I would put the same amount of resources I, as I would on anything else, any other emergency system in the town. Like, I don't understand. If you have to spend $2,000 a month on the website, to me, that's worth it. It's, it's astounding to me that like the website isn't a priority. Like, I don't even understand.
I'd like to continue that, okay? Uh, I apologize to you, Richard, for my comments earlier because I think we agree on the same thing. I think everyone in this room agrees that the website is terrible. Where I disagree with Richard and the Facebook post he put up was the responsibility. I understand that Kevin's a supervisor. But the, the responsibility to hire and fire the webmaster is on the five members of the board. We've known that this website has been his master for quite a while. It's important that somebody fire this guy. I understand that we're under contract to this guy till February, but it doesn't matter whether we fire him today or we fire him January 31st. We're not gonna get the money out of this guy that we are paying for. We're not getting, we're not getting the services rendered for the money we're paying for. It's a responsibility of the town to do the right thing and fire this guy. It should have been done probably before, like you mentioned, probably three or four months ago.
Okay, it's too late to do it tonight, but I will bring a resolution to the board at the next meeting. I will bring it up. I'll draft it and I will put it up and then there we go.
But what I'm trying to say is the responsibility is not on you either. I'm not trying to put the responsibility on you or put the responsibility on Kevin. But the, the problem is you can't single out really anybody because it's a five-person decision, right? You need three out of five to, to make that decision. So we're fighting with each other, but we really want the same thing. We want the website to be open and transparent. One of the other things that we fought for in this town, that you, that you fought for this town is, is to try to get a sign up. And I know that the town is working on trying to get a sign. So the town is working on trying to go to transparency, but we can't get anything when we put the blame all on the supervisor. Because it takes a five-person board to do anything. The supervisor's only one vote. Um, and I think that we just spin our wheels a lot by maybe one single person. And you know, I might be guilty of it too because I probably put a lot on Reg. But I put a lot on Reg in this certain situation because Reg and people that tend to support the ideas and bring ideas here for Reg to support. Has known that this website has been terrible for five or six months and no resolution has been brought forward to this board to address it. All it's been is, excuse my French, bitching and complaining on Facebook and in these public forums, but nothing's really getting done.
You're doing the exact thing that you said don't do. You're not, you're signaling at one person.
Well, I can't.
You're signaling at one person and saying, well, since you're, you're voicing the concern, it's your obligation to bring it up. The whole board should have done it.
The, the whole board is responsible for it.
And I didn't single out anybody.
Oh, well, Richard definitely, I, listen, I have my three minutes too, Michael, so we'll, we'll calm down here a little bit. I never addressed your concern. I addressed Richard's concern. Richard's concern was that the supervisor was the end-all be-all for this problem and that's not the case. Much like it's not an end-all be-all on Reg. However, the one that's bitching and complaining about it 100% of the time is Reg. And who has not brought any proactive measures forward. I, I bitched 30 today and I don't, I'm not on the board, so I can't introduce a resolution.
So let's work together and say, the board, can you please address this?
We are addressing, okay.
In an effective, immediate manner, because this is dragged on and on and on and that kind of segues into another aside. The zoning board person who's, or not the zoning board, but the enforcement officer who's sick, is there any, uh, kind of timeline? If any officer is ill to replace them or have their duties covered by somebody else? Because what if that illness goes a year?
Who would have been listening to me? I said that they do have a shared services agreement and I will make sure that the town of Plattsburgh or whomever, maybe the town of Peru. Whoever he taps on the shoulder, usually it's the town of Plattsburgh first, but I, I don't want to speak for him. It's, he's the code officer. So, um, like I say, they do share those services back and forth and.
I wasn't saying specifically, I'm just saying, is there a, a mechanism in place to replace people that are ill? Like, is there an official, like after one month, after three weeks, after a year? Like, how long does a person, um, you know, whose duties are important to be in?
That'd be inhuman to do that.
Well, you have twelve weeks of payment under New York State, right?
Well, that's what I'm asking. Is there, I'm just asking for the information. Is there a, a timeline or maybe the answer is no and that needs to be addressed?
The correct answer would be that he's an appointed official, so technically he doesn't have to come to work the entire year until the next year. Well, no, theoretically speaking, I'm appointed by the county. If I don't come to work the entire year, I get paid regardless of whether I show up drunk or not.
But I mean.
The information I was looking for.
I mean, that's not a good answer. Just like Reg, he's elected. If he doesn't come to work, he's still gonna get paid.
He just wants to not show up?
Yeah, I was asking for that information. So in my opinion, that's something that needs to be addressed for the town.
All I can tell you is they do have a gentleman's agreement that they cover each other because they all take vacations and they're all gone at different points. And he helps cover theirs and they help cover ours. And that's, that's, normally I, I let them work that out. I'm not, I'm the micromanage. I got enough to do that. I'm not gonna micromanage on their, you know, who's covering, who or when they're gonna be covered. Now, the code enforcement officer here at this town does let me know when he's gonna be out and who is covering. This was a sudden illness. So it's, it's literally been three or four days, okay?
I appreciate you, you answered my question. My question was general.
So I don't think it was time for the board to step in and say, hey, what are you doing?
No, no, it was not about this specific information. I heard that that's what triggered in my mind to ask the question. Hey, what happens if any officer is incapacitated for a certain amount of time? Is there a cutoff date? And the answer is maybe no. So that was my only question. I just wanted the information for myself that I wasn't questioning anything about, you know, those.
Okay, so who is covering Kevin for him? Am I on the codes committee? I should know. Who is covering?
Call him. Call him.
I tried to call him. I sent him a text. I sent him, I've got it all on my phone. I haven't been able to reach him for almost two weeks now.
They basically treat a point of like elected, so if you don't come to work and you don't do your job, the point would be that maybe next time you're not gonna get appointed to continue that job or not be elected to do that job.
Borrowing and helping, like I said. We had a, we had a councilman that was supposed to be here today that just got ill. Things happen, you know what I'm saying? I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna put, ignore what I want to.
Can, before we go, can I just make my comment on the website? We have asked for a legal interpretation of the contract, so we know where we can go as far as getting rid of that contract that we have.
The worst comes to worst if you just broke it, wouldn't you just owe the guy the rest of the money for the contract to be done with it?
That's what we gotta find out. We can do it. We aren't sure.
And these are, are good, and that, you know. I put it out here the last two meetings. I handed all the councilmen, they were all here then, the two that were highly recommended, okay? One of them does work for accountants next though, alright? I don't make that decision on my own. I, I've been told several times I'm not a dictator on this board and I've never been that way, okay? I have to have at least three people, it was done by a motion to hire this guy. So I have to have at least three people decide that they no longer want to do that. The other thing that I spoke to them about is that if we are going to make a transition to a new operator of our website. That if we fired the one that we have now, if we are able to do it, after I talk to the lawyers, and I'm not getting into that up here. For specific reasons, it's being handled by a lawyer, if we go that route. But we are going to have no website, period. That means there will be, and by open meetings law, if there's no website, I don't have to post it. It would have been the easiest thing for me to do was to fire this guy four months ago. And the only thing that our town clerk would have to do would be to post it on the bulletin board. I have been over backwards trying to make sure that I can get what we need up here until we get somebody that's competent to do it. But if this body and this town would like me to just do away with the website one morning, or Monday morning? And, and not have any notifications other than driving down here to do it?
I don't, I, I don't, I don't, I don't think that was ever a subject of mine, Kevin.
Can you start looking for somebody now?
We have. I don't know how many times I've just done it.
And then in February, you'll just be done with it.
David Lee has. I have two, and there's two different firms we're looking at right now.
We, we, we know realistically by February. We know realistically by February whether this has come to a conclusion, correct?
Yeah, because I, I'm gonna guess that this board would never appoint that for this.
But, but we can reasonably sit here and say, by February, we can flip a calendar. We all have a calendar. By February, there should be some.
By January.
Some change, some change that is gonna take place, right? So, so in, in the last, in the last 90, in the last 90 days of this issue, why are we gonna make it such a huge issue? If we're, if, listen, realistically, if we're not gonna recoup our money, right? We know that. Realistically, we know we weren't treated well by this employee, right? We know that. Realistically, we know there's other avenues. We know that. And realistically, the calendar is gonna move. So why are we beating ourselves down with this? Now, I'm gonna leave that where it is. The only thing I, I'm not aware of, how much is the contract?
Well, a little over a thousand bucks.
For the, for 12 months? Okay, good. We're talking about a thousand dollars.
There's out charges for certain things, but I have not got any of those up yet.
But now we all have a price tag on it, so we understand that. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna finish my time here today because I've got two gold, four-month golden retrievers and two kennels for over two and a half hours. I just want to say thank you to the highway department for the end of Asser Road and the end of Shingle Street for shared services to get the paving done, okay? I want to say that. But I also, I also want to bring to the, the board's attention this, that in April of this year, I independently went to the county. And spoke with their assistant over at the county highway department with my concerns about those intersections, specifically about Shingle Street, about that intersection. And I found no satisfaction, okay? I went a little bit further and dug a little bit further and contacted our legislator, okay? Who seemed very intent on wanting to know what the problem was. Who seemed very intent on wanting to know what the problem was. And I expressed my concerns to him and I let the whole issue die and it fell away, okay? And then miraculously, this fall, those two intersections were, were repaired. And that's terrific because it's my tax dollars. When Mike drives the dump truck and the plow across that intersection and damages my equipment. I own that equipment. The county doesn't own that equipment. I do. I'm the taxpayer. That's why I brought it to the county. But I will tell you this, the county was not happy with me, okay? They were not happy with me bringing this to them. They were adamant originally that they weren't responsible, but somehow the shared services, it worked out. And it trickled down and I left it alone and it got done. Sometimes that has to happen and it will be good, right? So I'm gonna leave that. Maybe shared services will assist in some other way for Mike and it'll be good for somebody else. Now, I was here last week at the meeting. I told you what was gonna happen if we didn't hire this guy last week, okay? And I'm gonna tell you, I, I sit in my recliner all day long and look out my front window on, on Flat Rock Road. That's all I do. The snowplow didn't come past my house until 11:13. 11:13. You know how many school buses I watched go past? You know how many heavy goods vehicles I watched go past? You know how many people I saw drive on their first snowstorm go past? Thank goodness there was no accident, okay? So if we're not gonna be serious about taking it serious, that Mike's department should be fully staffed 100% of the time, no excuses, don't want to hear them, not gonna happen. I'm paying the taxes. Get it done. Mike's department needs to be fully staffed all the time. And you know what? If Mike doesn't have fully staffed, guess what? Call shared services, call Peru, see if they can give you an operator for the morning. Call, call Plasberg, see if you can get an operator for the morning. Beat me down. I don't care. Do your jobs. That's it. End of story. There's no excuse for school buses being out, first snowstorm, 11:13 on Flat Rock Road. Thank you. I don't mean to be upset about this, but I've waited a week just to thank people, just to thank people, okay? But, but what hurts me is my prediction from last week about not putting this operator on in a timely fashion played out. And I had, and I had no control over. So what, so what I looked out, what I looked out of my window and saw was nothing that John Exford created. I didn't create it and I'm not bringing blame, I'm not bringing blame, but I'm telling you straight up that Mike's department is the hardest working department in this town. And if that doesn't get respected, and as me as a taxpayer, if I don't respect that, then I'm not doing my business with you guys. I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not being a good taxpayer with you guys. And that's what's important here, okay? 100% of the time, everything falls down to communication. 100% of the time. We're human beings. We communicate. That's what we do. And if we, if we choose not to communicate, our problems are our own. So I think I've used up my three minutes. I do have to leave. I'm sorry. But if these dogs don't see me in 10 minutes, they're gonna, they're not gonna be happy with me.